No worries. Thanks.
Lexi, we can't hear you.
Hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Technical difficulties all day long here. So it's six o'clock on my end, so I will go ahead and get this meeting started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the City of Tucson Planning Commission. My name is Lexi Wellitt, and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. The responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor and Council and Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff please call the roll?
One second, I apologize. Yes, Chair Wellitt. Chair Wellitt?
Present.
Okay, great. Vice Chair Martin? Commissioners Zegar? I don't, oh, I'm busy here, sorry, muted.
Here.
Excellent. Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
Commissioner McBride Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Pafford?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz Pino? Absent. Commissioner Lucia? Absent. Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Warrakee? Oops, I think you're muted.
Here.
There you go. Commissioner Lane?
Present.
And Commissioner McCantsy? Absent. We have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes and legal action report. Can I, would the commission entertain a motion?
I move that we approve.
Second.
Great. So that was a motion for approval by Commissioner McBride with a second from Commissioner Young. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say A.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is item number three, underground transmission line relief special exception, UDC text amendment. And for those of you in the audience who may have been present at the last hearing, may have not been, this is a continued public hearing for an item that was discussed last month that abruptly came to an end due to a lack of quorum for the Planning Commission. And so I wanted to set the stage here by making it known that we have asked that all commissioners, whether they were present at the meeting on the April 6th, or if they are new, it was mandatory for them to watch that recording. So all commissioners are up to speed with the items discussed at that time. And so this meeting is more or less a continuation of that hearing. And so I asked, out of the interest of time, that if we have, if you already spoke at the last hearing and have nothing new to add, that you cede your time to some other members in the public to speak. If you have something new to add and you spoke at the last hearing, by all means, feel free to speak up. But I do have a few speakers, but before I turn it back and reengage the public, I'd like staff to do their presentation. So Dan, would you mind giving staff's presentation, please?
Of course. Let me share my screen real quickly. I'll get that going. Oh, that's weird. Okay. Go back here real quickly. Okay, excellent. So this is item number three. It is the Underground Transmission Line Relief Special Exception. As Chair Wellitt had mentioned, this is a continuation of the public hearing from April 6th, 2022. This is a review of a proposed text amendment to the Unified Development Code related to creating a special exception process to provide relief from underground utility requirements in gateway and scenic corridor routes. Provide you a little bit of background on this to kind of, you know, kind of let you know kind of how we got to where we're at now. So this kind of began back in July, so on July 19th, 2021, Tucson Electric Power requested a zoning administrator determination on the requirement for underground transmission lines in a gateway corridor zone. The response to that, which was that determination, the City of Tucson zoning administrator issued that zoning administrator determination stating that the requirement to underground utilities within a gateway corridor zone, as indicated in the Unified Development Code, Sections 5.5.4.1.1. A, applies to the Keno to the Moss Petrie 138 kilovolt transmission line project. At that time, there were several projects in kind of development that were pretty far along, that were planned to be above ground, but this kind of changed their planning process. On September 23rd, 2021, TEP filed an appeal of that August 25th zoning administrator determination. On November 17th, TEP did request an extension of that appeal to the Board of Adjustment. That request was granted. The reason for that was because they were in discussions with the City of Tucson on potential ways to address some of these issues. Then on November 23rd, 2021, Mayor and Council held an executive session and study session to discuss this zoning administrator determination and that requirement for undergrounding those transmission lines in scenic and gateway corridor zones. And at that study session, the Mayor and Council directed staff to explore conditions under which a special exception process will be followed to explore relief from our scenic and gateway corridor requirements. And that's why we're here with that direction from Mayor and Council. So since then, you know, we came to Planning Commission back in March. So March 16th, 2022, the Planning Commission held a study session to discuss the underground line transmission relief special exception, UDC text amendment, it's mouthful, and voted seven to zero to set the proposal for a public hearing on April 6th, 2022. The commission at that time, they had some comments, and I'll talk a little bit more about those in a second. They discussed really the clarity of the criteria for relief, as well as there was a bit of discussion on the definition of hospitals in that criteria. From there, April 6th, 2022, the Planning Commission held a public hearing at that meeting. At that meeting, 25 members of the public spoke. 23 were opposed, two were supportive, and they spoke related to that code amendment. They also received 49, or the commission also received 49 comments that were submitted related to that item. Those comments went over things such as concerns about compromised scenic views, diminished property values, concern about historic neighborhoods, concerned that the proposal was too flexible, that it was just a giveaway, and then the need to uphold the intent of those scenic and gateway corridor overlays. At that meeting, and a lot of you were there, due to there, there was the abrupt kind of loss of quorum that we had there. And due to that lack of quorum, the meeting was adjourned prematurely, and it was scheduled for the next meeting, which is why we're here tonight. So talk a little bit about, just kind of go over again what the special exception process is and how it works and why we're doing this. So the issue here really is that regulations of the scenic corridor zone and gateway corridor zone currently require all new and replacement utilities we placed underground. Certain situations where there are physical, archaeological, cultural, or financial reasons to make those, put those utilities underground are infeasible sometimes. Currently, a zoning variance through the Board of Adjustment is the option. That is how you get relief from the zoning code. That is what they would currently go through. That would be the only option for relief from those requirements that's currently available to them for underground transmission lines. However, it's not really the most appropriate way because it doesn't directly address certain criteria related to actual undergrounding. So the proposed zoning examiner special exception procedure and criteria would allow for relief from those requirements for underground transmission lines, but we required public review approval process. It would have site-specific findings they'd have to meet, and then you could also add site-specific zoning conditions to those processes or to that project. So this is the zoning examiner special exception process. So again, this is creating a process for a process, but the following is the general overview of this process. These are all the steps that they would have to take to get that relief from the underground requirement. So they would have to go through with a mailed neighborhood notification for a neighborhood meeting for all properties within 400 feet of the project. And then all neighborhood associations within a mile of that project would also be notified and be allowed to go, would be able to go to that neighborhood meeting. There is an application submittal that would detail how the proposal meets all the requirements of those UCC standards and all those findings that are required and criteria. The staff would review that proposal, and they would make a recommendation to the zoning examiner based on that criteria on whether or not they need that, meet that. There is a mailed notice of the public hearing, which they would eventually have, that is sent as well to those properties within 400 feet of the project and all the neighborhood associations within one mile of the project. There is a notice of the public hearing that is posted onsite and in a local paper, so people are aware that the project is being, that that relief is being proposed. And then they eventually have that public hearing with our zoning examiner for a decision. At that time, there is also the ability for an appeal. All appeals would go directly to Mayor and Council for a final decision if there would be, were to be appeal of those, of that proposal. One thing to point out is that in addition to all of the criteria that we're looking at here is that there are also findings that must be met for all special exceptions. These are those findings, I think the one that's probably the most important is really the one, the second one here, that you have to find that it does not adversely affect adjacent land uses or the surrounding neighborhood, or that such adverse effects can be substantially mitigated through the use of additional conditions. So you can add additional conditions to mitigate those, but it can't substantially or adversely affect adjacent land uses or surrounded neighborhoods. So that's an addition to whatever the proposed criteria are that are in front of you right now. And then special exception versus variance. So currently, you are allowed relief potentially through a variance process. This is, this goes through our Board of Adjustment, through its review. The proposed special exception does differ from that variance process in a handful of ways. So one, the request for relief via variance goes through the Board of Adjustment, and this would go through the zoning examiner. So that's the, that's the kind of the first one. Second one is that the variance process after the Board of Adjustment decision, there's no appeal to Mayor and Council. That actual appeal would go to the state. This one, the special exception process, it includes appeal, and that appeal would go to Mayor and Council, and that would be with additional public notice for that appeal once, if that were to occur. And then this, and then this is kind of the key one, is that the variance process is really not made for this. So it doesn't have criteria findings that really apply to under relief from undergrounding or things related to neighborhoods or impact on neighborhoods or anything of that sort. So the existing variance process doesn't have that site-specific criteria. This does. This is basically set up to provide relief in the same manner, but it has to go through this public process, and it focuses on kind of things related to undergrounding and not just proving a hardship. So we have heard some feedback initially from the Planning Commission. This is kind of what we've heard from you so far. I know we didn't get into a full discussion last time, so we're happy to obviously answer additional questions from you. But this is kind of an overview of what we've heard. Their, you know, first one was just concern that this is just a blanket waiver for relief from the need to underground gateway and scenic corridors. This, just to kind of, just as a response to that, this really is establishing a process for relief. It's not granting relief for any projects. So it is just that process to allow for that relief. The special exception process is site-specific review and does include public notification, public hearing. And then all projects really must meet all of those, the applicable criteria and findings for the special exceptions, which is at 3.4.5. There was concern about the definition of hospital, and we talked about this a bit last time, to where, you know, we can, we clarified it with the definition of major medical services. But if you feel there should be like a bed limit or something of that sort, that's also something that could be a recommendation as far as concerns related to that. If you limit it at 250 beds or something of that sort, or 200 beds, that covers really the three biggest hospitals in Tucson and would keep you from including ones that maybe, you know, at a 25 or 50 bed limit. And then suggesting to clarify language and criteria. I will talk a bit about that, just as far as making things more clear. We have, sorry, computers acting up a little bit. There we go. We have heard, obviously, feedback from the public quite a bit. Some of those concerns that we have heard, that it removes the underground requirements of the gateway and the scenic. So just related to this, the Unified Development Code already does have a process for relief from those. As I had mentioned before, that is through the Board of Adjustment and the variance process. This is really just establishing a new process that continues to have the public input, but it is more applicable to these actually, and puts it so it's allowed in the appropriate situations and have to meet the findings. Where in the Board of Adjustment situation, they wouldn't have to do so. There was concern that this is just a blanket waiver for relief from the need for underground gateway and scenic corridors. This is really, again, establishing a process for relief. It's not granting relief for any projects. It is site-specific. It includes public review, and it is pursuant to them meeting those findings, meeting that criteria, and they have to do that. We did hear that there should be always full public review without prejudice. This does have that. This is a proposed special exception process for underground relief. It has full review and public notification requirements. And there's concerns about large transmission lines in residential and historic neighborhoods. And just related to that, there aren't any underground requirements in the UDC for transmission lines or distribution lines on local streets that are not scenic corridors or gateway corridors. So this isn't addressing any of those situations that, you know, where lines would go through neighborhoods or be on local streets. We don't have any requirements for those. I know in a lot of communities, they have underground requirements for distribution, not necessarily, not always for transmission, but just, we don't have those requirements here in the City of Tucson. So with that, the kind of proposed amendment, and I'm going to go through this, and there's, there have been some minor changes that have occurred kind of from when we went to the study session through the public hearing to now, and I'm just going to point those out, just so we're all aware of those. But the proposed amendments would amend the UDC to allow for relief from underground utility requirements of the scenic and gateway corridor zones through a zoning examiner special exception process. And this portion underlined is kind of one of the things that we did change. Again, we're trying to make it really clear that they have to prove that they meet those findings and that they do apply. So where the request would be evaluated pursuant to the following criteria. So we would look at all those criteria and evaluate it based on that. So these are some of the criteria. I'm just going to read through them, so we're all on the same page. So the first one is proposed overhead transmission lines are contextually sensitive to adjacent and surrounding zoning and land uses. Examples of this may be a proposed location that is industrially zoned, or a proposal that results in less adverse aesthetic impact or less adverse impact on view sheds or surrounding properties. Second one is underground criteria causes significant increases in ground disturbance when compared to overhead construction in sensitive areas such as environmental resource zones, water course amenities, safety and habitat or wash-washes, or environmentally or archeologically sensitive areas, such as a lot of the areas that we have on, you know, the west side, near the Santa Cruz and things of that sort. Minimal impact on residential areas with adequate setbacks. Existing high-voltage transmission lines, vertical structures, or buildings in the area that already compromise the view shed. Overhead lines located on non-gateway and non-scene corridor zone routes that perpendicularly cross a gateway corridor zone and scenic corridor zone. So when it crosses like that, repair or upgrade of existing facilities where proposed facilities are similar in size and scale to existing facilities that are being replaced. So like to like. And then, as it continues, and these, there were, these are where the changes are here with the, with the little bold and underline. Transmission lines are proposed in an area where there's an existing presence of railroad, highway, and/or bridge crossings, or in an area where underground installations would interfere with the existing underground utilities. Next one was proposed transmission lines provide electrical service to critical customers where overhead lines are strongly recommended for specialized operations. Examples include, but are not limited to provision to electricity to Davis-Mountain Air Force Base or other installations necessary for national defense, hospitals. This is where the clarification was. And in your materials, we have put in a portion where we highlighted it, and there's a, there's a comment to the side to where you, where it shows where that changes have occurred. Research facilities, et cetera. Number I, proposed overhead transmission lines rather than underground transmission lines on a particular would avoid undesirable aesthetic view shed or adverse impacts elsewhere. Should the transmission lines be located on a turnover route? This is the one that was response to Vice Chair Martin with the clarification. Proposed project in an area where cost underground or install underground would have desperate impact on low-income residents. We removed that portion after there just because we didn't want us to think, we didn't want it to seem like this one, like other ones were allowed to be just one criteria. This was just, just kind of to make it a little more clear. K, a special exception request to relieve the requirement to underground transmission lines that meets the findings established by the UDC 3.4.5 findings, which meets the criteria AEG of the subsection are deemed presumptively meet the requirement findings of approval. This is the one where it basically, you still, it's basically on the onus on us to kind of prove that it doesn't meet those, but you still have to prove that it meets the findings. And then we added this section down at the bottom here that says basically the Z findings shall identify each of the specific criterion that relate to the application project and which are met. So approval of the zoning examiner special exception shall not preclude any necessary regulatory relief process such as variance. And this is just to be clear that, you know, the findings have to show that it meets, that it identifies each of those criterion, and how it relates and how they're met, et cetera, through that. So that's the proposal. Those are kind of those changes that we've seen kind of in it. And kind of with that, we just kind of want to put forth a potential motion for you, and then allow you to kind of get to the public hearing and have your discussion. But we do have a couple potential motions for you related to this. One is to recommend approval of the Underground Transmission Line Leaf, and the other one is to recommend denial. And those are kind of some of your options. You also have options to make changes to the, to any of the criteria and things of that sort. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions related to this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dan, for your presentation. That was super helpful, and I appreciate your thorough recap of what has happened to date. So thank you. With that, if I could now open this up for any questions from the commission related to the information staff has presented.
I have a question. This is Commissioner Cassidy.
Floor is yours, Commissioner Cassidy.
Thank you. I was not at the April 6th meeting, but I did watch the two-hour recording. But I'd like some clarification on the criteria that are in subsection 12. So letter K says that they have to meet the findings, and they also have to meet A, E, and G to be deemed presumptively met. What if they don't meet A or G? How many criteria do they have to meet in order to get approval? Or is it really discriminatory and up to the zoning examiner to determine if enough of those criteria are met to approve it?
So ultimately, it's all the applicable criteria. So if there are criteria that don't apply, they wouldn't necessarily have to meet those. But if they do apply, they have to meet those criteria. So there, I mean, yes, there's potential that there could be a situation to where only one of the criteria applies to it. And that really is up to, I mean, that's going to be up to the zoning examiner to make that decision on which ones do apply. And it's based off of, you know, there is also the staff report and the recommendation and the analysis and all the public feedback that goes into that decision.
I have a question.
I believe that's Commissioner Zegar. Floor is yours.
Zegar. I praise is fine.
Okay.
So my question is, is, so we're going from the Board of Adjustments as far as making, if the Board of Adjustment says no, then it goes to the zoning examiner currently. But we're going to switch that up when it, when it only applies to utilities, that the zoning, that people, a person wanting relief would go to the zoning examiner's office, and the zoning, again, and make a determination. As they did, they said, no, you did not meet it. So they can come back on appeal to the zoning examiner's office. And from what I can tell from what Daniel said was that it is up to the City of Tucson to prove that a person requesting relief is not meeting the criteria. So it's not up to them to prove that they're meeting the criteria. It's up to the City of Tucson to prove they are not meeting the criteria. Also, another question as far as the zoning examiner, the office of the zoning examiner, how many people are in that office who makes this determination? Is it more than one person? Is it, I imagine that they are, the zoning examiner is a paid employee, I'm not sure, versus the Board of Adjustments who are appointed, like we were appointed, or asked to serve? So can you explain how many people are in the zoning examiner are actually making this decision?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things here. I think the first one is just the process. Sorry, hold on. I think first one is just the process as far as just the appeal process. So Board of Adjustment, they would go through and make a oh, sorry, Bambi, I see your hands up.
Hi, yes. Sorry to interrupt, but real quick, just a reminder to all the guests that may be on either virtually or over the phone, and the commissioners, if we could, please not use the chat function as, because those people who have to dial in using the phone cannot see that. And if you have something that you want to say, use the raise your hand function. And I'm sure Chair Wellitt or Dan Versick with the Planning Commission will then call on you to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Bambi. Yeah, I, we, some other check function got turned on. I just turned it off. So there shouldn't be that ability anymore. So, okay, so sorry. Thank you, Bambi. Appreciate it. Yeah, so the Board of Adjustment process, it goes to the Board of Adjustment. There is notification related to it. And then they make a decision, and the appeal for the Board of Adjustment goes to the state. It does not go to the zoning examiner. It doesn't go to the, it doesn't go to Mayor and Council. Related to the zoning examiner, when it goes through to them, basically has the full public process. The zoning examiner is a neutral party, is hired. They are hired by the city as far as to do their job. And basically, they make findings based on, based on all the information that is given to them. So to go to the zoning examiner, it's one person that does that. Generally, they have a law background, and they make, they make a decision based on findings. That would go to them. They would make that decision. And a recommendation you could have is to make this into a zoning examiner or a Mayor and Council special exception. That's also an option. But if that were to be appealed, the appeal from that would go to the Mayor and Council, and then they would make that final, final decision. If you were to change it to the other type of special exception, which is the Mayor and Council special exception, it would go to the zoning examiner for a public hearing, and then they would make a recommendation to Mayor and Council who would make the ultimate decision. So that is another option. Should you feel that they should be the ones making that decision? I mean, they're obviously elected officials, and they're not city employees like the zoning examiner.
Just real quick, Dan, before we move off of the breezes questions, just can you clarify? These are two Um, just real quick, Dan, before we move off of the Breeze's questions, just can you clarify, these are two standalone processes, right? A variance process and the special exception process to request the waiver. They're two standalone. You, you don't go to the, the Board of Adjustment first and then go to the zoning examiner. It's one or the other, correct?
Yes, Chair, Chair, Chair Willett, that is correct.
Thank you. Thank you for that. The next person I saw raise up, one second. Actually, I think Piri has her hand up. Piri?
Yeah, hi, this is Piri Glinsky in the City Attorney's Office. And I am on my phone, so I'm not sure. Are you seeing my video?
Yes, we can see you.
Okay. I can't see myself, so. Um, I just wanted to address the Commissioner Zigir's question relating to subsection K and the presumption. I think that, and I want to clarify regarding the burden. The burden is on the city or the zoning examiner to determine that those three criteria are met in order for the applicant to receive that presumption. But it's still up to the applicant to prove that they meet those criteria. So that, I just didn't want there to be any misunderstanding about who holds the burden and how it relates to, to that portion of that. So hopefully that clarifies for you, Commissioner Zigir.
Thank you. Thank you, Piri. Commissioner Martin, your hand was up next.
Thank you, Chair Willett. In reading through the code, it appears that, you know, we've kind of distilled this down to TEP, but it looks like it applies to all telephone cable communication lines in any gateway or scenic route with this change in code. Is that correct, Dan?
Um, yeah, Commissioner Martin, it, it applies to transmission lines as defined in the definition that we put in there. So yes, it could potentially be some other organization, not necessarily just Tucson Electric Power, even though that is probably the most likely applicant related to this.
Well, it says for electricity for sale, including transmission lines, also includes telephone, telegraph, cable, television, and other communications transmission facilities. So, you know, this, this decision is not just about TEP. And I guess maybe you could explain why this hasn't happened on other gateway routes. I mean, if you drive through the city of Tucson, almost every other gateway route has transmission lines on it. I think it was a process previously, wasn't it?
So Chair Martin, I, I believe this was something that, and, and, and I don't know a lot of the, the background history on why this wasn't necessarily applied. But it does appear that it was a situation to where one organization was operating in a certain way, and it wasn't being applied, it wasn't basically being sent to the Planning and Development Services for review, which would have ended up having the requirement for undergrounding. So it really took the zoning administrator determination to, to kind of, I guess, make that clarification that it is required for utilities to be undergrounded on gateway zones. So that, that's, that's essentially how we got to this point. And that's why you see gateways that have overhead utilities.
And my third question was, or, can you tell us what the review process is for non-gateway and scenic streets as far as approval of transmission lines?
Yeah, um, sure, yeah, no, there, there is, as far as that goes, we don't have requirements in our Unified Development Code related to non-gateway and non-scenic quarters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Commissioner McBride Olsen, your hand was up next.
Um, yes, um. So I had a question for staff of why this special exception process got formed in what appears to be sort of a closed-door process with TEP and city staff with no other entities being involved in it. I mean, I was, spent a year and a half going to weekly meetings for, to change the city sign code. And somewhat with a lot of, a lot of public input and discussion, and so on. You know, I, I'd like to hear some, some comments on that because it's certainly been commented on by the public that they were, you know, Tucson Mountain Association in particular was, was requested time and time again to be part of this development, and were denied. So, and then after that, I have another question.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner McBride Olsen. Yeah, so ultimately, right now, we're doing the public process related to this. This was direction that was provided at that study session. There was an executive session where there was a discussion related to kind of what is going on and illegal matters related to it. And the direction that came out of that was to us staff to bring this special exception process through the public process, which is what we're doing right now as far as the public process for making a change to the Unified Development Code to have, to allow for relief in certain situations.
Okay. And then my other question is, so, and I've asked this question a couple of times before, maybe not in the best way. I kind of still feel like I don't have an answer. So if you were to, if this were to go forward and someone in, in TEP in particular were to ask for this, would it, would it be determined as, as an exception for the entire project? Would it be possible to piece out sections of this project where there are extreme difficulties such as over the railroad yards and that sort of thing? Because it's, you know, and, and I'm not even so sure that it makes any difference because the criteria that they have to meet sort of covers every base you can imagine along this route that they're trying to do. So, but the question is still, you know, is, would it be a determination for an entire project, or is it possible that this could be pieced out to, to provide relief for, you know, one particular portion?
Yeah, so Commissioner McBride Olsen, excuse me. The, the goal of this and the idea here is that, and I, I'm going to turn on my light because I'm looking like I'm talking in the dark over here. So the goal here is that it would be applied to segments, right? So they would have to show how they meet criteria or meet those findings for each segment that it applies to. Obviously, a situation where you, and I, I think I talked about this at the last meeting, that situation when you're on, I think it's Keno, and you have to basically go over, what, 22nd, the rail yard, as well as aviation. That's a completely different situation and would have completely different findings than as you go further north and you're running adjacent to the university and Sam Hughes and some of those other areas. So they would have to basically show how they meet that criteria for each of those segments if, that they were applying for, essentially.
So they don't have to meet all criteria for all sections. They can say, you know, a project can have the criteria being met in little portions here and there along the project.
Well, they have to, they have to meet all applicable criteria to each of those sections. So, yeah, they would have to show how, if, if, if it's, if it doesn't apply, how it doesn't apply in those areas as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner McBride Olsen for those questions. The next hand I see raised is Commissioner Lane. Welcome. Uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I have a question about criterion 12A. Even with the example, I'm struggling a little with what the proposed amendment means by contextually sensitive. And then apart from that, I'm curious as to why that criterion is one that is included with presumptive criterions, criterion that mean you presumptively met the other criteria, essentially.
So I, the way I read this is basically they, it's, it's to set up a situation to where if you're next to industrial land, or you're in an area where it wouldn't have that visual impact, and they have to show kind of how, how that occurs and how that is, then they would be able to meet that. So I, I think that's why the examples are in there. You know, again, industrial, industrial zoned area, that it results in a less aesthetic impact than, what is it? Or less of a view shed impact on surrounding areas than if it were in another area or to be undergrounded. So they have to, they have to prove kind of how that works. The presumptive one is just because those are situations that I, I believe it has less of an impact overall, and that's why it would put that, again, put that burden back on, on, on them to prove it, but also, also to be able to prove that they, that, that isn't, they aren't meeting that criteria. That's why that was added in, essentially.
Not to, uh, kick this back and forth forever and ever and ever, but I do wonder if that's a phrase or a criterion that shouldn't be made a little more specific or wordsmithed a little more. That's my take. I'm, I'm done. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lane. Brieza, you have a question?
Um, yeah, I want to, I will clear from Shannon McBride Olsen's question. So, um, which is, is how, um, TEP, I'm, I'm looking at their, TEP is asked for the whole route to be above ground. So they're from 1 point A to point B. So, um, how is this, when they say, if you agree to say, yeah, okay, you can, you can, you can put it all above ground, you know? And then say, well, you said we could put it all above ground. We know what's, I mean, I mean, TEP was pretty specific in the letter from July 19th of last year. As far as, how they call it, the franchise agreement it has with the city of Tucson. So what is to say, well, you said we could. You didn't, you didn't say we couldn't do it. You know, this goes through, say, because you, you even said yourself this specifically for TEP. Though it may sometime in a, in the future apply to somebody else, but you're writing it into the UDC laws. So, um, you know, there should be some, something in this that says that it's, it's just not for, you can't just ask for a whole segment of the city down a public street to do something. You can't just put it in, in a bulk, bulk appeal. Um, I don't know if someone has brought this up before, one of the planning commissioner meetings concerning this special exemption, but just, just a thought. Thank you.
So Commissioners Zigir, I, just a couple of things related to that. One is the thing that keeps them from being able to come in and said that we, we told them they could do this is the fact that we issued that zoning administrator determination. And that's law. That the zoning administrator is a position that's set out in state law. They have that ability, and if they make that determination, unless, you know, they, they still have their appeal out there related to that, but, but that is what keeps them from saying that we said they could because we said they can't. So that's the first thing. So we have, we have done that. Related to the segments, I mean, it, it basically, you, they could potentially come in and do it multiple segments and things of that sort, but they still have to prove that they, that they meet those findings for each of those areas. And if they don't, the zoning examiner and staff would, would pull those out, and it would be subject to, to a denial. But that's, that's, that's how it would work, essentially. So thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? It looks like Commissioner Cassidy, your hands back up. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I've come up with a couple more questions. The first one is in criteria C, minimal impact in residential areas with adequate setback. What is an adequate setback?
Um, so Commissioner Cassidy, again, that's, they're going to have to show images of this, showing what, what that impact would be. I think it depends on the scale and size of the actual facilities being put in, so there's no exact kind of number or things of that sort that that would potentially be.
Okay, and then my second question had to do with the perpendicular crossing of the scenic route. So currently, without this exception, if, if there is a perpendicular crossing of a scenic corridor, how far back from the corridor is that undergrounding required to be set back? Does it just have to stick with the corridor?
Yeah, so Commissioner Cassidy, I believe it is 400 feet from that. So basically, what you end up having is you'll have lines that come up, and then about 400 feet from the corridor, they have this big apparatus and it shoots it underground, and it goes underneath, and then it pops back up on the other side, another 400 feet down the road.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Commissioner Lane. Your hands back up.
It is. Thank you very much. Um, I have been hearing a lot of conversation around segments, and it sounds like segmentation of any particular proposal is maybe thought of as something as a, like a check or a safeguard on this exception, sort of getting larger than anybody intends it to be. But I'm curious as to how segments are, may or would be defined. Who defines a segment? Should it be in the code? Is it somewhere else in the code, or what does that look like?
So I, I mean, it would basically be up to the applicant on what they're applying for. So in their application, they would have their, their cold quarter that, whatever they're going for. And then they would, they would show how they meet the findings for this portion, and then it would be reviewed again by staff or by, by, and by the zoning examiner for each of those segments. So in, in a lot of ways, it's initially probably set up by the applicant when they come in, and they, they propose it, and then we would review it, and then we would say, well, wait a minute, this segment goes from, you know, the south portion of Keno on, on this side of 22nd, all the way up to Sam Hughes. The conditions aren't the same for that. And then that would be part of the staff's findings when we review that and be like, that doesn't, that actually doesn't meet the findings.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm not seeing any other hands raised from commissioners here, so I, I have a couple of questions, Dan, for you. Just, just to clarify and confirm, the special exception process to allow the waiver of these, the undergrounding of transmission line is, it's not an outright approval, correct? It's a, a process that requires a notification of some sort, whatever that segment is, whether it's, you know, 300 feet of a segment or a mile of a segment, you would have to notify on that entire segment, 400 feet off of that, and it would be a public process. And then at that point, it would go to the zoning examiner who would then verify staff's findings through, you know, research, whatever, and they would issue an approval, denial, recommendation, what, what have you, subject to compliance with the criteria listed in the, the U specific standard. Can the zoning examiner also add additional stipulations, conditions, criteria at the time of the special exception to address some, some concerns perhaps, you know, brought forth by the public at that time?
Oh, yes, yeah, Commissioner or Chair Willett, yes, that's correct. They, they have the ability to add zoning conditions that address specific situations. And a lot of times what ends up happening is there are specific concerns from residents' neighborhoods from the public input that lead to those, those site-specific criteria being added to them. But that's, that's one thing that, I mean, it is, yeah, is related to this, is that it's not just their analysis, but it's also the feedback that they're receiving that goes into their decision and the decision-making process.
And then I just, a general question. Do other, we've, we've talked a lot, and this is, you know, predominantly TEP has been the applicant, while it's not only for TEP. Are there other utility companies that are around the city that utilize a similar process to, to help relieve some of the requirements, if you will, of the UDC? Where, you know, on a case-by-case basis, you know, if it's, et cetera.
Yeah, so thanks. Yeah, thank you, Chair, Chair Willett. Yeah, so actually, we have something similar for Tucson Water or for water utilities, essentially, to where when they want to come in and put in a pump station, they will come in and have to go through the special exception process. And what we've seen with that, this kind of happens, you'll get feedback. And again, I've seen this in a couple of them recently, where they've added site-specific conditions based on feedback they've received from, from neighborhoods or nearby residents and things of that sort. So it is common for other processes.
Thank you. Commissioner McBride- Thank you. Um, Commissioner McBride Olson, did you have another question for staff?
Um, yes, I do. Um, and, and maybe this is asking for something that's too specific, but I believe Commissioner Martin asked something kind of like this last time. This, um, under section H, the proposed transmission lines provides electrical service to critical customers where overhead lines are strongly recommended for specialized operations. You know, and this is one that, that definitely really, really applies to this particular project that they're trying to do because they're trying to put in something for, uh, for banner health. And I'm wondering is, it, what is so, so specialized and so different about the new project that would be going in that's different than the current lines that are now, that are currently underground going to banner? Um, because this is, you know, this particular criteria, um, sort of sets the, it, it kind of sets the, the, um, groundwork for the whole project being above ground, uh, at least for major sections and, uh, on one of the longest and major scenic routes that we have.
Um, so Commissioner McBride Olson, I'm not entirely sure related to that project as far as what that requirement would be. I think this is basically stating that, um, there are certain circumstances such as Davis Mountain or major medical facilities that are important to the infrastructure and the city and things of that sort. Um, we are, again, I, and I, I think I mentioned this earlier. Um, you know, in your recommendation, you're welcome to make any changes or suggest changes. Um, this still has to go through mayor and council with another public hearing and another review. Um, so there, so, um, so, you know, you do have that ability. And if you feel that this criteria leaves it open too much, um, you can amend it, remove it, et cetera, whatever you feel is necessary.
Thank you.
Uh, Breeza, your hands up?
Okay. Now you can hear me. Just a thought. Um, as far as the, um, 400 foot, um, distance surrounding a project, any project and notification of all neighborhood associations within a mall of that project. Considering that, um, this is specifically talking about gateway corridors. So, um, and a gateway corridor or, um, a scenic corridor is used by a lot of people. The whole, the whole thing is the gateway order means that there's a lot of people in Tucson that use it. There's a lot of people that will be affected by the overhead lines as they drive down the street. It's a visual thing. So, um, shouldn't something like this rather than be on a, um, uh, neighborhood type basis within 400 feet of that street? You know, um, should this be more of a public, a type of public hearing that should be announced more say in the newspaper, like this public hearing was announced in the newspaper? When this comes up to the zoning examiner rather than, um, um, especially when it affects a, a wide range of people who travel down that specific road.
So, uh, so related to that, um, commissioners of yours, I was, sorry, having trouble talking this evening. Um, yeah, so, uh, it does require a legal ad and posting on the route. So it would need to be required, be, be posted in, in the paper. Um, but it would also have signs, um, at every intersection with other roads all along, um, the corridor. So those people that do drive those would see that, um, and see that posted and know that there is that proposal out there.
So is that also in Spanish or just in English?
Um, I believe we have translation services. I'm not sure. It's, so I know there's a portion that's in Spanish, um, but I don't think the whole thing is in Spanish.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Well, thank you for all the great, uh, questions, commissioners. And it's a really great discussion we've had here thus far. Um, at this point, I'm not seeing any more hands raised on our side of the table. So, um, I would like to open, uh, entertain a motion to open the public hearing. But before I do that, I, um, just want to again, wait, I don't know if I have to do that because it's already open, but, um, uh, so we're good. But before we, I turn it over to the public there and, and start inviting some speakers, I just again, wanted to reiterate that all of the commissioners present, um, here uh, have reviewed the material from the last meeting, are very, uh, up to speed with what has, has been discussed. So out of the interest of time, I ask that, um, we, we only, um, provide commentary if we, uh, if we haven't spoken already or if we have something new to add that hasn't been discussed. And then also, um, I would like to, uh, limit the, the public hearing to no more than an hour, um, just so we can continue moving the discussion forward here. Um, and we can get everybody back, uh, moving, moving, uh, through their evening. So with that, I, um, have four people who had signed up to speak, um, and emailed Dan. So I'll start with those folks first. And then, um, should anybody else wish to address the commission, um, we'll invite you by, uh, raising your hand. So, uh, the first on the li- list I have is, uh, Martha Lynn. Um, and the, the floor is yours and you have three minutes.
Martha, are you? You're muted, Marta.
Well, we'll, we'll come back to, to Martha here and we'll move on, uh, to John, John Schwartz.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. I sure can. The floor is yours. You have three minutes.
I'm a member of the steering committee of the Tucson Underground and Coalition, uh, which represents, uh, nearly 25,000 Tucsonans, uh, from 11 different neighborhoods and three other affiliated organizations. After extensive research, thought and consideration, the steering committee, uh, has concluded that while we're willing to accept or stay neutral to seven of T E P's 11 proposed criteria, uh, for exceptions, we ardently oppose four of the criteria T E P has proposed, which, uh, would be D, H, I and K. Furthermore, the steering committee strongly advocates for the addition and insertion of four new criteria along with an amendment to T E P's proposed preface in order to place appropriate and badly needed checks on the overall effects of T E P's proposed exceptions on the gateway and scenic corridors that otherwise may do very serious damage to the quarters themselves. That we're willing to accept or remain neutral to seven of T E P's 11 proposed criteria, we believe testifies to our genuine good faith and fairness. But regrettably, the serious concerns we've raised have not yet been treated with similar good faith in the planning commission's process thus far. And here I'm taking up, uh, I think Commissioner McBride's point. Not one of the four new criteria that we've asked to be inserted and added was ever discussed or debated by any member of the commission or suggested that it be discussed or debated, let alone put to a vote. It's as if in effectively amending a city ordinance, which is what's going on in this case, the process calls for debate and decision only on formal recommendations made by T E P, not any formal recommendations coming from entities within the public. The time you've allotted to each speaker does not permit me to either describe or justify uh, the four new criteria we've recommended or why we so strongly oppose, uh, criteria D, H, I and K. We did review these criteria we opposed and also the four new criteria we recommend at your first public meeting. And we send each of you extensive written documents that do the same. There are careful, strong justifications behind every one of our recommendations. For example, that looking at just segments of a route may well end up with more than half a route, uh, two-thirds, even the whole route being overgrounded. Um, we ask that these, uh, recommendations be given real consideration. In our view, the process you followed is, and being willing to debate, only T E P's proposed criteria is and has been fatally flawed. And we hope that you will change that and allow other entities to make recommendation, formal recommendations that you debate. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Schwartz. Um, the next individual I have on the list, we'll go back up to, uh, Martha Lynn. Are, are you, uh, on the line?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
I sure can. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Um, we already have a law and the law that we have is much easier to follow than this acceptance. All these exceptions are wide open, um, with no parameters. And I, I realize we're doing something new here, but it looks to me based on how T E P has gone about doing this, that, uh, it's just opening up to them to, to question everything they do and push to do as much, uh, above ground as possible. Uh, we've spent far too much on our downtown and the Broadway expansion and Green Park on other neighborhood upgrades that we have coming up in the future to allow the city to be devalued by these power lines. And you have to think, we're not just talking about the power lines they're putting in net. As the city grows, those above-ground lines are going to have more and more lines on them and going to look worse and worse. We're, this decision is going to affect our grandchildren, our children, um, their adult lives, um, more than ours. So as far as the gateway areas go, uh, we need to look at that much closer and decide if that's what we want. Um, to have this, uh, on the shoulders of the examiner, um, is, is far too much for one person to be taken care of. And having it come back to the city and, uh, the mayor and the city council and public approval is all well and good. Um, I heard another thing in there about it going to the state. That's the last thing I would want to see. So, um, our Sonoran Desert is our identity to the world. The poles and lines will make, um, taking pictures from your telephone almost impossible. Um, it's, it will just devalue every drive-in hike and every visitor we take to tour. Most importantly is the added fire danger. These poles that release fire at their tops when the heat is at its highest, the highest fire danger times to avoid overload. The lines are vulnerable, the monsoon winds and storms, the endangered desert life, starting fires and increase the medical needs load, which has been mentioned before. And I want you to note that fire is not a natural succession of the desert. It's, it's not like a mountain forest on fire. T E P is but one small part of a multinational corporation based in Canada that can afford to underground, but instead has decided to fight it in every community, every step of the way. They've spent their money on the personnel and training to convince every client across this country. That is building a larger system to allow it to be over, uh, above ground. And they will spend it on payoffs and lawsuits for devalued properties as they have done across the country. I submit they could better have spent that on the projects themselves, putting it underground the first place. Closed meetings to put the guidelines in place that will be the law in Tucson because these paid lobbyists convinced our elected officials that this is how it has to be is a corrupt method of performing this decision and this governmental process. So I would like this commission to flee to the council to reject this bad behavior. Tell this corporation, we already have a law in place that's necessary for the protection of Tucson and that we are stewards of this desert and that's to underground them. There should be very few exceptions and the wording of those exceptions should, should note that there should be very few. Thank you.
Thank you for your, your time there. Um, the next individual I have on the list, list is, uh, Denise Baldwin. And you have three minutes. The floor is yours. Can't hear you. No. Hurt you there for a second, but.
Yeah, for some reason it keeps saying connected, connecting to audio.
We'll, we'll go ahead and move to the next speaker and then I'll come back to you. Okay, Ms. Baldwin? Uh, the next individual on the line is Beryl Baker. You have three minutes. The floor is yours. Well, I'm not seeing Beryl Baker on the line here.
I saw her earlier. Let me, let me see. Yeah, she, she is here. Let me ask her to unmute. We'll see if that works. There, Beryl, you're on, you're on unmuted now, I think. But we can't hear you.
Alrighty, um, are there any members of the audience that have any or with, with, uh, wishes to, uh, address the commission? Alrighty, so I'm gonna take, uh, the hand that just raised and then I'll jump back over to, um, Ms. Baldwin.
I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll start with you, Mr. Clark. The floor is yours.
Can you hear me now?
We got quite, quite an echo. I had to mute you. I'm sorry. Um, we'll let, Mr.
Hi there. Am I on?
You're on.
Okay, very good. Um, my name's Greg Clark. Uh, I live just off Broadway, a few blocks away from uh, the proposed Route A that would stretch from the Keno to the proposed Vine Substation. Um, and I very much support this, uh, process that would allow for the consideration of special exceptions. Um, I participated in this public process, uh, about selecting the route uh, for years since it was first proposed. Uh, I found it to be a fair, open, public process that resulted in a preferred route. Uh, the route known as one I, A was the least invasive option of the five or six that were considered. Uh, and it avoided the worst impacts to our neighborhoods and to the environment um, by placing these lines along an already wide, congested, paved, loud, noisy, polluted thoroughfare. Uh, I feel that's the best place for these overhead lines. Um, I'm concerned about the opposition to this, even establishing this process. Um, because those who oppose the creation of this special exception act as if the city of Tucson already has a citywide prohibition on overhead power lines, uh, or a requirement to place all power lines underground. And that this commission is somehow trying to overturn that requirement. But as you know, there is no such requirement except on the handful, probably even less than a handful, the few things known as gateway or scenic routes. Um, there's no such ordinance that requires now or is even being considered that would put all utility infrastructure underground. Now, the state constitution in its provision provision establishing the Arizona Corporation Commission does allow cities and towns to regulate infrastructure in such a way. But where's this process? Why isn't, if, if everybody is so up in arms about these big power lines, why isn't there being a citywide ordinance to absolutely put all power lines underground? Um, so there's nothing and, and because there is nothing, opposition to the, this line, it's only gonna put, push the line a block away or five blocks away or down another route. It can go up Norris or Olson or Tucson Boulevard or Cherry, which was considered in an initial, as an initial route or up Euclid and Park and through the Arroyo Chico. All these are options that are going to happen if we cannot work with T E P to find, you know, a reasonable route and try to place some locations underground where possible. But so, so all the benefits that everybody is, is stating like, uh, oh, you know, it'll, this is gonna save our skyline. This is, nobody wants to look at this. We all want to take pictures. Well, it's not solving anything. It's just placing those lines somewhere else. So I, I really wish we could all accept that that this is not a, a resolution that would create an ordinance that places all lines underground.
You have 30 seconds, Mr.
Okay, so there are arguments that scenic corridors are great. Historic neighborhoods are special, gateway neighborhoods are special, gateway corridors are special, but I would observe that everything's special. Your neighborhood, whether it's historic or not, whether it has high property values or not, all the negative impacts are gonna occur to somebody else if these aren't allowed to go up our biggest thoroughfare where in my opinion, you know, is the natural place for them. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Uh, we'll jump back through the line here. I, I see Beryl's got her hand up. We'll start with her. I see that you're unmuted. But I still cannot hear you. You're not coming through. So we'll come back to you, Beryl. Um, Ivanka, I have you next on the line. Oh. Beryl, is that you?
I don't know. I'm on, I'm on the phone.
You have a, a very bad feedback coming through. Commissioner Pafford, do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, yes, you might suggest to her that she can't be on the phone and the computer at the same time. If the sound coming from the computer can be picked up by the phone, that's that feedback. So she'll, if you're able to send her that maybe she could turn her computer speakers down while she's on the phone. That might solve the problem for her.
Thank you for that suggestion. I, uh, Beryl, I'm, I don't know if you heard Commissioner Pafford or not, but um, perhaps try turning your sound off on your computer or down, um, when you get turn on your phone line to, to address the commission and that might help with some of the echoing there.
It worked.
We can hear you.
Does this work?
It worked. Perfect. Thank you for that suggestion.
Boy, these technology stuff is really frustrating to people that are illiterate, like computer illiterate.
Well, we can hear you. You're coming through loud. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I apologize. Frustration. I can't be as eloquent as the people that were in front of me, but I would like to make a couple of comments. As one of the people who worked hard to have the road bordering our neighborhood designated as a scenic route to try to maintain some beauty along the road, we find it insulting, distressing, frustrating to have the potential of codes being rewritten to destroy or prevent or to allow any company to circumvent the intent and codes of scenic routes. We are deeply concerned that the E P is not building into their system resilience from climate change when they have the opportunity to do so. Instead, this foreign company wants to rewrite our city codes so they can continue to do business as usual. Some people, uh, who ran into the wooden pole in front of our house and snapped it, leaving us and many others without power. Fortunately, they walked away from the accident, but if the utilities had been underground, they would have not had a pole to run into. Seems like if T E P were building into their systems resilience and safety, they would be wanting to underground their lines when opportunity offered itself, such as when they are putting in new lines and replacing lines. As a citizen of Tucson who has worked thousands of hours to try to maintain, maintain some sense of beauty in Tucson, we find it discouraging, perhaps even insulting, that the city would allow a foreign company to come in and rewrite our city codes. Codes which should instead be made stronger to encourage climate resiliency. We urge you to not recommend the codifying of excuses in our city codes by T E P. And thank you for being patient with me for allowing me to even speak. Um, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. So I'm gonna jump back over to Ms. Baldwin. Did you get your technology figured out over here? Not quite. So we'll, we'll come back to you. Um, Ivanka, are you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
We most certainly can. Uh, the floor is yours. You have three minutes.
Okay, I, I spoke the last time, but it wasn't heard. Uh, technology issues. So if this is a really democratic process, I'm a, I'm a former, I'm a retired faculty member and if my students can't deal with the technology, I would have a five minute workshop before the meeting inviting people to make sure that they know how to raise their hand, they know how to, you know, unmute or they know not to have the computer on. Um, this is a highly, highly unfair process. Uh, I would never do this to my students. And you really, really need to think about how you are implementing, you know, calling yourselves a democratic process. That's my two cents on this.
Well, thank you for your comments. I appreciate them. Um, Ms. Baldwin, I believe you're the last one, um, to, to speak here. So unless there are any other folks in the audience that wish to address the, the commission, we'll go ahead and give you a, a few minutes here just to see if we can get you connected.
Oh, can you hear me?
Bingo.
Okay. At least we have that. I, I'm, I'm having, you know, of course I have computer issues. Um,
See, we can see you and hear you perfectly. So while it says you're connecting to audio, you, you're coming through like you're here. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, uh, technology. Okay, um, I have a presentation, um, that I would like to, um, can I share my screen? Is that all right?
Um, yeah, I, Dan, I don't know if that's possible, but i- if it is possible, as long as you can, can make your presentation in three minutes, by all means, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I have some pictures.
All right, Rob, this is Perry Glinsky in the City Attorney's Office. If we could have, please, all of the speakers, um, announce who they are and give their name for the record.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm Denise Baldwin. I'm the Vice President of Tucson Mountains Association.
Thank you.
And, and you'll, you'll get that through the presentation, uh, too. Um, and, um, and I, I first want to, um, and I'll make some points, uh, um, that have come up regarding, um, uh, some things that have been said, um, regarding notification. This is not something that's new to the variance process. Um, the variance process um, for the scenic and gateway ordinances, uh, well, uh, there is notification. So this is not a new pro, something that's new. Um, there is a, a, a notification process that, that we already have. So we, this is, um, I, I don't want that to, to, I don't want anybody to go, um, thinking that this is something that's new. Um, and, um, regarding, um, the discussion of other applicants, T E P is not the only applicant, but um, the other, we have phone, cable, internet that, um, that are leasing lines on T E P's poles. So they are also parties to this, but T, they are T E P's poles. Um, the, uh, the other thing is that, um, uh, this is a new process of relief, but we, it, we're, we're talking about just enforcing what we have. We have an ordinance and we're asking for enforcement of what we have. We're asking the city to enforce what they have. Um, and going to the appeal, uh, going to appeal to the city council is a political process. And, um, uh, I don't think that's the best process for, for our, um, our public. Um, so that with that said, I would like to share my screen. Um, and I have, um, uh, let's see, how, how can I, um, tell me, tell me what I can do to, uh, do I have permission to do that?
I, I believe I've given you permission to do so. Yes.
Oh, thank you. Can I, I need the this is the, uh, I don't want the entire screen. I want a window and this one here. Okay, great. And share. Okay, great. Um, so can you see this?
Yes, we can see.
Okay. Oh, maybe I should. Okay, great. Um, so what, my, I am Denise Baldwin, the Vice President of Tucson Mountains Association. And, um, what we are asking is to preserve Tucson scenic and gateway ordinances. And we are asking you to enforce and not weaken them. And the, the exception process is a weakening of the, the, the scenic and gateway ordinances. And, um, let's see here. Um, we have the Tucson Mountains. We'll, we'll be speaking, I'll be speaking today about the Tucson Mountains, which is Tucson's gem, if you will protect it. We are the temporary stewards of the Tucson Mountains that is passed from one generation to the next. It is the best example of the unique Sonoran Desert flora and fauna. And we are located in City Ward's one, three, Pima County and Marana. It has the greatest scenic, uh, the greatest density of scenic routes in Tucson. We have seven city scenic routes that lead to nineteen Pima County scenic routes. And that compare that to the rest of the city, there are eleven scenic routes. Um, we have one gateway route compared to the, to eight, uh, uh, gateway routes in, in the greater Tucson area. And you can see the map, um, to the, uh, to the right. Um, uh, just for your reference, it's just, it's, this is just a clip of, of the Tucson Mountains. Um, let's see here. And our members, supporters and people from all over the world, because we have tourists that support the Tucson Mountains are, are very concerned about this, this, uh, undermining of the scenic and gateway ordinances. Because they love our Tucson Mountains. As you know, we depend on our tourists. Um, they're concerned about the lack uh, of will to enforce these ordinances and the willingness to have interested foreign parties to craft law for their own profit. And as an example, uh, I have a quote here. I feel it is absolutely vital that the, from us, one of our, our supporters, uh, vital that the wires go underground so as to preserve the natural beauty of the desert and surroundings. No exception to this existing rule should be allowed.
You have one minute left there, Ms. Baldwin.
Okay. All right. So you have a legal basis and duty to enforce this undergrounding. It's a city charter which gives the regulation removal of poles and wires. You have city charter. Um, this is Article five, Article thirteen. You have a Supreme Court case that, that gives you the authority from, based in the nineteen sixties that, that gives you the authority, that gives the city the authority to, um, make a utility underground in the right of way. Um, I will now give you pictures of the damage that T E P has done in our scenic routes in Speedway. This is what T E P does when they maintain their above ground lines. And this is more. This is what they do. They, when they have to maintain these lines, this is what happens. This is what happens to the gem of, of the Tucson Mountains. We have been asking you to enforce this ordinance. We do not need to yield to T E P's tricky excuse policy. It is shameful. And I am going to show you what these poles look like in our scenic routes in the Tucson Mountains. These are, this is the scenic route that we are supposed to be able to enjoy and, and preserve the, the vistas, the, the natural beauty and be able to enjoy what these, what the mountains are like. And this is what it looks like. It's not pretty. It's not, it's not beautiful. It doesn't have the sense of, of looking at the natural beauty. You have to dodge under these poles and wires in order to take your picture of nature. And we do. That's what we do because you know, when you live in a messy, ugly house, you, you work around the trash and that's what this is. This is what T E P is giving us.
And you could find, finish up your thoughts. Um, I'll give you another thirty seconds there.
Okay, well, here's some more pictures. And this is what, this is what Silver Bell looks like. This is more of what Silver Bell looks like. And this is what Silver Bell looks like. And the, you know, we, we are asking for you to a, appeal to your better judgment, deny this. And we consider that, please do consider that above ground power lines lower property values. And, uh, Councilman Steve Kozicek has, has appealed and, and brought this, this information to city council. It lowers the quality of life. It impacts health and it is a safety hazard. So with that, I thank you very much and, uh, I, I, uh, wish you well.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you for your patience.
If you could go ahead and mute your other device for me, so I.
I, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing here. Try, here we go. Thank you.
Very good. Um, well, that I, I believe is the last speaker, um, that I am seeing. Are there any other members of the public that wishes to address the, the commission related to the item at hand? You could physically raise your hand too. If you can't find the raise your hand, I see somebody frantically looking. Um, I believe it's Karen. Uh, go ahead. The, the floor is yours. Um, you just need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, I just wanna put my comments in about the safety. I mean, I have watched P G and E's.
Hi, this is Perry Glinsky in the City Attorney's Office. I'm sorry to interrupt, but for the record, can you please state your full name?
I apologize. Karen Schreiber. I live at Grant and Campbell. The where everything is gonna be surrounded by these massive power lines at P G and P G, uh, T E P gets their way. I, um, I am heartbroken looking at the fires taking place. P G and E. PG&E in California is allowing their poles everywhere and they're catching on fire. They're burning down the state. And then I look at New Mexico, our other neighbor, and I see what's happening there. Power lines again. And today, I sit here in my house and I look over, someone drives down my alley and flicks a cigarette butt into the dry grass in our neighbor's yard. We had to go over and jump and put it out the fire. This is, we're asking for disaster. I can't believe we would allow above-ground poles in this area where the soil is dry, vegetation is dry, the winds rip through here. How can we even consider putting in more above-ground power lines? I think that would be a travesty, it's a death sentence for this whole city. I cannot believe the city would allow it. And that's my two cents.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming out tonight. Are there any other folks out there that would like to address the commission? Just gonna take a quick little peruse through. I'm not seeing anybody else virtually trying to raise their hands. So with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Martin, I've moved to close the public hearing.
Mr. Stafford, I second.
Perfect, so I've got a motion and in its second, all those in favor say A.
I.
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 Any opposed? Perfect, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. So I guess what's, what's the discussion of the commission? What's the, the pleasure of the commission? How do we want to discuss this? Commissioner Martin, your hand is raised.
I'm muted, sorry. So as a user of the code, I think it's important to have this process in the code. As Dan said, the variance process is not appropriate for something like this. I think the requirements and the findings and the conditions are robust enough to give the zoning examiner enough purview to make a decision. The only thing I would change is to make this an S1 special exception that would go to mayor council with the recommendation from the zoning examiner. That's it.
Very good, Commissioner Martin. Thank you for that discussion. Commissioner McBride?
Sorry. You know, I have a lot of concerns about this. I, I understand that there may need to be an improved process, but. I, I have some of the same concerns. Tucson Undergrounding Coalition had about some of these criteria. Criteria H in particular really bothers me, because I don't know that there's anything particular about special electric service that we would require this, you know, this thing that they're trying to do close to Banner that would, you know, allow newer, bigger, more obtrusive transmission lines along Campbell. I drove home this evening along Grant Road, starting at about the highway, I-10. And as I was driving along Grant Road, I was driving through the sections that have been, that have been improved through the RTA process. And looking at the, the large new poles that were put in along Grant and how extremely obtrusive they are compared to what existing poles look like. And, and what really hit me was when I got to the section where they, they've done a section sort of runs between, before Oracle and goes, goes east towards. Let's see, it goes east a ways, and then all of a sudden it stops before you get to Campbell. And, and as I'm driving along, all of a sudden I get this awesome relief in looking at these huge power lines and how obtrusive they are. And, and the thought, that my thought is that, you know, the scenic routes were put in place for very specific reasons. And it seems like this particular, the way this is worded is going to really, really downgrade any kind of authority there was to, to maintain scenic routes in, in the city. And yeah, I'm just having a really hard time thinking that I can approve this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll go ahead and add my thoughts here, just to keep the discussion moving. As a user of the code as well, and as a user of, of the special exception process in my everyday life as a professional practicing planner. I, I tend to look at this as it's, it's not an approval that allows TEP or anybody for that matter to come in and do whatever it is they want, but rather it's an added step. And I, I tend to agree with staff's perspective that this process, the special exception process is a more appropriate process than the variance process. And, and for the reason of that being that it is a much more involved process. The zoning examiner has, you know, as an individual who goes before him on many instances in my everyday job, he will continue a case until there's some resolve and, and there's, there's a resolution put in place. And so I, I trust this process. I think this process works. It works for other utility companies. The one thing that I think has, that I'm hearing is, is a concern that has been brought up is, is that the appearance and the aesthetics that these poles have as they move into perpetuity, if you will. And so one, one thing that I'd like to throw out to the commission is, is something to, for us to, to consider how we can require some sort of maintenance and/or, you know, some sort of criteria that gets to the appearance of the poles as we move forward to ensure that as they're installed, that they, you know, because of the case, but you know, the unique case that they've presented and are demonstrating compliance with the, the criteria, that those are enforced as we move through and out of the special exception process. So I, I understand it's, it's a challenging idea, but I also recognize that there are other implications that get to, you know, some equitable situations. And we all know if, if things become more costly with utilities, who is those costs passed on to? It's the user and not, not so much the company itself. And so how do we start looking at some of these things to ensure that, you know, there aren't some unintended consequences by simply not allowing for a, a relief process that further requires additional review stipulations can be added by the zoning examiner, et cetera. But those are, that's my thought on, on the matter. A brief, so your hand is raised?
I don't have a little hand is raised icon. So. So I appreciate the background of the text amendment. Whoever produced that, I think that was Daniel. Thank you. Very helpful. So in July of 2021, I guess Tucson Electric Power requested zoning determined on ZAD, right? And the city of Tucson, they said, ZAD saying that the requirement to underground utilities within the gateway corridor is indicated in the Unified Development Code. So it, the zoning examiner already said, you know, you have to underground. So well, TEP didn't like this answer, so, but couldn't go to the BOA, because you can only do one or the other. This is, I guess, one of the questions we had posed before the public hearing. So, so now it's like, well, then TEP goes, well, you know, I mean, you know, then they're throwing out some legalities as far as maybe there is a reason for them to insist that they be allowed to underground rather than going through that judicial process like that. The mayor and council suggested, well, maybe we can find a workaround. So they're going through, now they're going back through the zoning examiner's office, but they're giving the zoning examiner, one person and his staff, another thing to do. Is they're giving them, oh, well, now we're going to give you, you can do a special exception approval. And then we're, and writing something new into, something new into the UDC code with a bunch of different criteria. And, okay, so I'm new, new to reading the complete depth of this. And I would have to agree that I find some of these, this criteria, you know, specifically geared to making it easier for TEP not to underground along gateway corridors and scenic, in scenic zones. So I'm kind of. Maybe this is the correct process to go through. Maybe it's not. So I'm just concerned that every time a large company or corporation comes along and requests that they want to not do this, and they ask for a variance. I guess this is what they did going to the zoning examiner, asking for a variance not underground. And if they get an answer of no, is that the city of Tucson turn around and basically write something to give them another option, since they can't go to the Board of Adjustments. So I'm just kind of. I appreciate the process of doing this, but adding some more text amendments to the UDC code, it pretty much clearly states that you need to underground in these areas. And they didn't ask for a specific area.
Well, I think if I, if I might, might just clarify, it's something that I'm hearing a lot just through public input and, and through the commission, is there's reference to a specific project. There's a lot of reference in regards to talking about a segment or whatever. And I just want us to remove ourselves from the discussion of segments and everything and, and really think about it for, for the, the material that's at hand here. And that's just the process where we're asking, we're, we're being asked to discuss whether or not a process to go back through and, and negotiate, if you will, with the public is appropriate. So just, just want to.
Well, though, I'm, I'm against, as, as, as far as this go, I'm against this process. But if this is just a process, then why, and, and why we have, you know, these attachments to, to the commission's things? It's like a date is from July 19th, 2021, from Tucson Electric Power.
I think the.
It has nothing to do or nothing specific to do with Tucson Electric Power. Why is this attachment here? It's because they're the one that's actually requesting a variance. They're requesting to have the UDC code changed. They're not requesting it, the mayor and council is requesting it, but they're pressuring the mayor and council to do it because of this on page one, that says the city of Tucson does not have any ordinance. We're talking about UDC code. This is not an ordinance, an ordinance precluding specific items due to the gateway designation that in general the parties must follow in the franchise. So it wasn't written into the franchise document that they sound, signed with TEP. But TEP bought that, that company. And they should have known full well that there was certain undergrounding UDC codes in the city of Tucson. So they know.
Well, this, this, this process exists too. That's what I think where it's not a new process already. I think that's been brought forth to us on a number of events, that this is not a new process that, you know, there is the waiver in place that allows for TEP to go through a variance to not have to waive it. That exists today. I think what, what we're discussing is, is this is a, an action that staff was asked by mayor and council to explore because of some, some actions that had occurred through a zoning administrative, a ZAD, if you will. I'm gonna get my acronyms wrong there. But, but that being said, this is, this is another, a process that's more appropriate. But it, it's not, it's, it's already exists, I guess, is what I'm saying.
The process already exists, but this one is more appropriate? Okay. Don't think I understand that at all, but thank you.
Commissioner Lane, we'll, we'll go to you and then we'll circle back.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. So for me, my background is I'm a hotel developer. I've been through the special, special exception process a time or so before. And as a general process, as a general concept, I actually do think this is an appropriate alternate avenue to take. I don't have a problem with special exception processes, period, or administrative overrides or anything like that. To me, I'm still a little focused on and concerned with some of the criterion. It's been touched on a few of the criteria. It's been touched on a few different times from different members of the, of the public where it certainly feels, and to me even reads like some of these. On the one hand, if you've got, what is it, 11, 10, 11 different criteria that, that have to be met or should be met if they're applicable, then maybe that narrows the exception so that you're not undermining the intent of the UDC. But I feel like many of these criteria having the opposite effect, as in they're just making it. I, I guess I'm sympathetic to, as much as I like this process, I'm sympathetic to the arguments that this is a written eviscerating, evisceration of that particular UDC section. So for me, there's some way in which I'd like to see some of these criteria made more clear or more specific, or honestly, even some of them, them go away. And I'm relatively new. As a matter of fact, I just was sworn into the commission an hour and a half, two hours ago, as you know. So again, I'm not really looking to hold back a bunch of work, but I feel like this needs a little more work before I'm comfortable saying yes. That said, don't hate a special exception. That, I think that's a great process.
Great, thank you for that. Commissioner Cassidy?
I agree 100% with what Commissioner Lane just said. It's exactly what I was going to say. I'm not opposed to the process itself, but some of the criteria I think need to be really tightened up or we're going to completely undermine the intent of the scenic and gateway corridors.
Perfect, thank you for that. Probably gonna pronounce your name, last name wrong, but Commissioner Hurake, correct me, please.
Pretty close, it's Hurake. So kind of to follow along the same sentiment that the last two commissioners noted out on the criterion with this. Would it be possible to maybe include some maximum square footage on applicants to perhaps protect the, the scenic aspect of these corridors? So if these special exemptions do have to happen and we can still maintain this process, that's obviously been, been worked on quite a bit. At least we can limit the size and area of it.
That's a great, great thought there. And I, I don't know if that's, that's something, I'm sure we, we could. It seems like it could be something that as part of the criterion or further evaluation, if that's the direction we so choose to go, that, that could be something that is explored of limiting the overall size of these segments, if you will. I think is, was the point you were making there. Very good, thank you for that. We'll jump back to Commissioner McBride Olson. Your hand was up. Oh, hold on, before I turn you back over, Scott Clark, I'm gonna let you jump in here, because you just raised your hand.
So you could consider the additional criteria you're wanting to put in this one-on-one and make it part of your recommendation to go forward to the city council. So this is the time to make those kind of changes and think about it. Or you could give more specificity to staff tonight, what you want them to explore and bring that back to you with additional language. So you have the option to add some conditions to tighten this up and then hear what the staff brings back to you before you vote. Or tonight, you could tighten up your conditions and put those as part of your recommendation. So those are options for you to consider. So no, you don't have to do anything right now. And if you're not comfortable with it, try and get more specific.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner McBride Olson?
Um, yeah, so let me kind of clarify a little bit. I am, I am not opposed to the special exception process either, even though I'm not a user of the code. I'm a graphic designer, one of the only ones that's ever been on the commission. But I have been on the commission long enough to kind of understand how these things work. Um, uh, that's not the issue for me. For, for me, the issue is, well, two things. I, I feel like I, I, I still feel like the process in which these criteria were developed kind of doesn't pass the sniff test for me. Um, because I've seen, you know, mayor and council put together, you know, citywide commissions to look at things that I've been thrown on like the sign code and Broadway and Grant corridors. Um, so um, I do have, I do feel very uncomfortable with some of these conditions. Um, and some of the same ones that, um, I think it was the gentleman from the Tucson Undergrounding. The um, criteria D, H, and I bother me. Um, criteria D that says existing high voltage transmission lines, vertical structures or buildings in the area already compromise the view shed. I mean, seriously, yeah. What, what, what view shed in Tucson is not gonna have that in there somewhere. Um, H really bothers me because I don't know why. I'm, I'm not quite sure why that's in there, except that it says there's some special reason why this is the only reason why we can do this. Uh, it has to be above ground. Um, and uh uh, criteria I, which says basically that it's better to put overhead transmission lines in the scenic corridor. Um, because if we didn't, if we, you know, because we don't want to underground. And if we don't do that, then we're gonna have to push these into some, some other neighborhood that's gonna make it worse. So it's kind of like, you know, if you don't do this, we're gonna threaten you with putting it somewhere else. So those three, three things really bother me. Um, you know, I feel like that needs to be looked at and and either eliminated or crafted. Uh, I would like to eliminate number H or letter H. Um, and, and, and D, um, and I'm not sure what it is about I that about, you know, that could, could be worked with, but perhaps you could work with that somehow. And the reason why I brought up the view that I was looking at along Grant Road is because those are new transmission lines that were put in there. This is the new reality of what it's gonna look like, if not even worse than what they've put in there. Because of this, you know, this particular project and any particular project in the future could be where there's a big upgrading of, of the, of the services going into that particular area. And so when you look at those lines that are going along Grant Road, those are hugely um different than the lines that you're used to looking at. And there are sort of, and and they're very intrusive. And so to, to see those have to go in along a scenic route. You know, one of the, one of the longest scenic routes that we have that's north and south in, in city is very bothering to me. So I would like to see, uh, I, I don't really feel comfortable with saying this. This should, this should be rewritten this particular way. I'd like to have staff go back and look at this and come up with some um, some compromises on some of this that make it less um able to like cover every single base and therefore we can, you know, we can just do this without really holding the utilities, whether it's T E P or telephone companies putting in 5G or whatever. Can try and hold this to a tighter standard.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Pafford, hope Scott, sorry.
I was wondering, so we're very focused on the conditions right now. So what I'd like for staff to do is bring those back up so you can see them. And then uh focus your discussion on that and then give us the guidance on where you'd like to take that.
Uh, Commissioner Pafford?
Yes, in view of everything I've heard this evening, uh, uh, Mr. Clark told us a moment ago that we have a few different options, one of which it sounded to me like we could potentially send this back for tightening and then it can come before us again. Did I get that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, you did. And it's a very serious issue. So do what you think is right here.
In, in, in view of the severity, uh, and in view of what I've heard, and in particular, uh, Commissioner McBride Olson. I think that if, at least for me, I'd like to exercise whatever option allows us to send it for, for a tightening. Now, you, you, I understand you'll need some guidance for, for that, but I'll I, I need time to think about it in, in greater detail. So I think um, whatever we can do to get some more time, get you guys to work on it a little bit more. I, I'm not opposed to uh special um uh options either. In inherently, I don't think they're bad, but at the same time, it seems to me that this has some walkarounds that uh, that I don't want. And i- if we have something in place already, but what we're trying to do is something new, maybe to simplify the process. And maybe this isn't a process that should be simplified necessarily. Maybe it should be more difficult when we're talking about things that are so so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cassidy?
Thank you. I wanted to provide some specificity on the, the criteria that are causing me a little bit of concern. I share the concerns with D, H, I, and K that were mentioned by the gentleman from the Tucson Undergrounding Commission and also Commissioner McBride Olson. Um, the other conditions that give me pause are the ones that just leave a lot uh open to interpretation. For example, see minimal impact on residential areas with adequate setback. I think adequate um needs to be tightened up a little bit more. It, like, something that's adequate to you might not be adequate to me. Um, the, the one about the repairs similar in size and scale. What is similar is a 20% taller similar is 10 feet taller similar. I'd like to see that tightened up. Um, and I'd also like to see that there be a more specific number of criteria that might have to be met. Um, there may be cases where only one of them is met. And maybe that's enough. I don't know. I haven't spent enough time poring through this at this point, but I would turn to staff to consider whether that's something that needs more work or whether it's adequate the way it is.
So you really have, uh, sorry for interrupting this as a Scott Clark planning director. So what you have before you tonight, you can recommend that it goes forward with the recommendation of approval. You could recommend it goes forward with a flat-out denial. You can modify it right now, or you can say the following criteria we have concerns with. Name that criteria, specify the concern, and then we come back in two weeks to a month to address particularly those issues. And with that, I'll stop and I'll let the chair run her meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So, um, Commissioner McBride Olson, do you have something you'd like to add? You'd like to make a motion? What are?
I'm really bad at trying to put together motions, but I have, I have the same. I think I have the same concerns with the um, these criteria, criteria C, D, H, I, and K. I really think need to be looked at and either gotten rid of or redeveloped to be more. It, they just need to be looked at. And, and I also think I, 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 I don't, I don't know that what they've written, what the Tucson Undergrounding Coalition has written really has any way to make it into code, but I, I like to have the staff look at what their recommendations were and see if there are any of those that kind of can be added into this, um, into this document that can make it more minimal to them because they are, they have put a lot of work and energy into trying to uh promote undergrounding of utilities in Tucson. So um, I'm gonna leave it to somebody else to craft the motion, but uh, I, I do, would like to, to have staff look at these particular criteria and the other comments that I made and come back to us shortly with whatever recommendations we have to try and get this moved forward so that we can make a recommendation to mayor and council uh that we would not make a mere, a recommendation to mayor and council tonight.
Well, I think Commissioner Cassidy has her hand up. Maybe she's prepared to make a motion here.
Okay, yes, I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
Um, and stop me if I need to correct any of my language and we'll just play, but you're here, but I move to continue this item. And for staff to reconsider conditions, C, D, F, H, I, and K. Looking for a way to tighten up those particular criteria or eliminate them. And also to consider the additional criteria recommended by the Tucson Undergrounding Coalition as presented by, was it, uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he was with that Tucson Undergrounding Coalition.
Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
That sounded like a, a motion I, I was tracking there. You have everything that I had written down as of concern. Um, the, do I have a second?
I second.
Very good. So let's go ahead and just, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none. So um, I think that the, the motion there passes there unanimously to recommend that we continue this item and staff go back in and tighten up. That was criteria C, D, H, or C, D, F, H, I, K. Um, there, so uh with.
There we go. Yeah, if I could have our attorney weigh in on some timelines right now, just so everyone's aware that we do have a legislative timeline. We've got to hit some period. If you could cover that, that'd be fantastic.
You bet. Um, the, the board rules require that, um, now that the public hearing has been closed, that the commission must issue its recommendation within the next 45 days. So that means um staff will now need to um consider um the motion that's been made. Consider the changes that have been requested and that the hearing will have to be rescheduled and a, a recommendation issued within the next 45 days, or else it uh gets forwarded to the mayor and council without recommendation.
Okay. Um, is that something period that the commission can, if we date specific continued it or something that we could add more time to that 45 days or we, we harden fast up the 45 days?
It's hard and fast with the 45 days. There's a general 180-day um timeline, but that's the maximum from when the, once the public hearing was opened. But now that it's been closed, you're locked into that 45-day timeframe. Um, and that is, um, you know, it's a, uh, it's a provision so that things can't be continued in perpetuity and so that the applicant at some point can have closure for their application. So um, you know, things may not be able to be resolved within that period of time. The, um, if staff come back with recommendations or changes or no changes based on what can happen between now and then. You know, again, the options are to forward um with a recommendation, to um disapprove or to forward with recommendation with the following changes to X, Y, Z um criteria.
So I guess let me turn that back over to, to, to Commissioner Cassidy, since you were the original creator of the motion there. Um, what I'm hearing is that if we continue it here at this stage, we perhaps put staff in a, a tough position to addressing these conditions. However, if we continue this on with a recommendation to mayor and council with it being that staff needs to look at these criteria before that public hearing, is that what, is that what you're suggesting, period? Is that, would that be the, the other avenue to this? To get by staff more time, I guess, is what I'm trying to to look at there.
Hmm, no, I'm sorry. I'm not following you there, Lexi.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, like, if staff can't do what they need to do in 45 days and it's presented back to us and rather than it being, you know, just something that gets moved forward without any recommendation because the commission is still not okay with it or whatever, um, is there another way that we can keep this moving without putting staff and, and such a time constraint, if you will, is what I'm kind of asking for.
Sure, well, I will be all right. We'll, we'll be able to get this all taken care of in 45 days. We'll consider your concerns on the conditions. We'll bring those back to your consideration. You'll have options there. And then from that, you can make your choice whether to forward it with approval, forward with conditions or deny. So we'll get it done in 45 days. We're okay with that.
Okay, I, I, I would prefer that and I'm, I'm seeing, saw a lot of people's heads just when I begged the question. Um, that was, was a no-go. So I, I want to stay with the, the original motion and what we had suggested. I just wanted to, to beg um the question on, on what it might mean moving forward. Uh, Nicholas or Commissioner Pafford, you have a?
Uh, yes, uh, for um, for Mr. Clark. Uh, how much time do you anticipate you'll require in order to cons, to implement um tonight's issues and recommendations or concerns?
You meet once a month now, so I'm pretty sure by your next meeting, we'll have gone through the conditions, we'll have heard the concerns, we'll take Tucson Mountain Association, there are considerations which you discussed tonight. And those will be the considerations we look at. Those will be the ones that we provide options for. And so we return to you in 30 days. I'm not, Dan, when is the next regularly scheduled uh planning commission meeting? We'll be back.
It would be the first Wednesday of uh, what is it, June? So I'd have to take a look and see, but.
Since this is such a serious issue, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, is it possible to meet a little before that? I don't know how that calendaring, you said earlier that we'd have to, we could meet within the next two weeks or within the next month. And I'm willing to meet a little sooner if you guys are able to move a little uh to meet that in order to give this more attention in the event there are still changes still. And we do this in 45 days.
No, we're, we're gonna, I'd like to keep us on track right now. Uh, and then Dan is focused on this, the momentum's there. So the regular scheduled planning commission is adequate. And if it gets to a point where your log jammed, uh, we'll move forward from there with. Let's say you can make a recommendation, the staff report still reports on everything you considered and where you ended up as a group. There just won't be a formal recommend, recommendation. So one way or the other, they're gonna have your input on this and they'll know that you'll consider it all things. And I imagine we'll have a pretty vigorous discussion on what direction they want to go. Because I don't, I don't believe there's uh, uh, any kind of consensus on the council whatsoever right now. They're gonna want to hear this issue at large in, in depth.
Just for, just for clarification, um, the next meeting is June 1st. Um, and then we have an alternate meeting on June 15th. We'd have to check forums, make sure we have enough people and things of that sort, but those are the dates. Thank you.
Okay. Teresa?
Okay, um, I would, um, would it be possible to um have uh the motion by um Miss Cassidy to be read aloud uh again before the end of the meeting and to clarify, it's not Tucson Mountain Recommendation. That was the Tucson Underground Coalition. Um, that, um, Scott Clark, just to make sure that, um, that uh what we're asking for is clear. And um, I know that Cassidy explained it totally. I had a hard time writing everything down as quickly. But if, um, um, I don't know who would, who took better notes than me could read it live. Cassidy'll can read it one more time. I appreciate it.
Yes, I can do that. Uh, sure, well, if you'd like me to go ahead and do that.
Yes, that's, that's fantastic.
Okay, I probably can't repeat it word for word, but I can get all the. Okay, I probably can't repeat it word for word, but I can get all the content correct. I move to continue this item to the next meeting. Actually, I didn't specify a date, so just move to continue the meeting for staff to reconsider criteria, C, D, F, H, I, and K. And also to consider the additional criteria recommended by the Tucson Undergrounding Coalition.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Cassidy for reiterating that. So with that, um, staff, Scott, Perry, Bambi, are we all good with that to, to, to move on to the next item on the agenda?
We're good. And then looking at the planning commission dates, if you can arrive on June 3rd, you're still within the 45 days of June 15th. So that's the alternate date. So we will get you there one way or the other. Uh, so you'll have plenty of time to deliberate and discuss this before making a recommendation to mayor council. So I think you're in good shape right now.
Great.
So, uh, Perry, Bambi, you may want to weigh in as well, but I, I think the best course of action would be to go ahead and choose a date for you, Lexi, as a chair to announce that date to the public. So that there are no notice concerns.
Okay, um, well, I am going to have to use my schedule here. I am out on June 1st. I'm on vacation. So June 15th would be the date for the public hearing for that one as well.
So is that something that is workable for the rest of the commissioners who are here? Dan?
So are we suggesting that there, there not be a meeting on the first of June because Chair, Chair Willitt is not available?
I, what I'm suggesting is that we pick a date certain. It, it wouldn't have to be the 15th, but it should, if, if it's, if the hearing is continued from tonight, then we're, we're noticing it tonight with the, yeah.
Okay. So personally, my feelings are that I would, I would prefer to go ahead with a meeting on the first of June because if there's still need to be considerations, we can meet that 45 day criteria by meeting again on the 15th.
That, that works for me. If the rest of the commission is, is, uh, present. And there's a quorum, I guess that's.
Sorry, this is, this is Bambi from the clerk's office. I do have a question. And Perry and either Scott or Dan can correct me, but since this is being continued, does that mean there's going to be another public hearing on the planet for the planning commission or the public hearing is done?
So the public hearing has been closed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was truly closed. Otherwise we, we would run into that having to post the public hearing timeframe again. But, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pafford, your hand is raised.
I, I simply want to say, I, I think if we can make that date June 1st, that, that would be good in terms of being able to maneuver if we need to between, within the 45 day timeline.
Commissioner Cassidy.
I agree with Commissioner Pafford, and I am available on both first and the 15th.
Dan, um, based on the survey that we have, um, that you have sent out, is there a quorum of people that have responded?
On the first. Chair, well, yeah, it, it appears there should be a quorum. Plus we do have a full commission right now, so it's going, should be easier to get a quorum at this time. I think we should be fine for, for June 1st.
And let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and plan for June 1st. And Chair, Vice Chair Martin will just have to run that meeting there. Well, then I, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Perry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, what time? Will that be at 6:00 PM?
Yeah, 6:00 PM on June 1st. Okay. All righty. Well, I think that's tied up any loose ends on item number three. So that moves us to item number four, which is PDSD or PDSD, uh, staff announcements.
I don't have any major announcements. I, I just want to thank you all for being voluntary planning commissioners and coming prepared. You're going to be getting in some really thick items. This is the beginning of a very long planning session for Tucson as you get into Plan Tucson and climate. So please continue to come prepared and ready to discuss because it's going to get thick. So thank you again. Have a great night.
Thank you, Scott. Um, moving on to item number five, future agenda items. Dan, what do you got for us?
Before, Dan, I'm sorry, before you start, can, can I piggyback off of PDSD's announcements? Real quick, I'm going to turn on another video. I want to introduce you guys to, um, one of our newest members of our office. This is Elizabeth Barone. You won't be able to, well, you may be able to hear because I'm using my earphones, but, um, I am training her to be also the support staff from the city clerk's office. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you all to Elizabeth. And so, um, you'll be seeing her, her as well in the meetings and going forward. She'll, um, she'll be the main support staff and I'll be her backup at that point. So I just wanted to quickly introduce her.
We're welcome. Nice to meet you as well. We're looking forward to, to having you here with us. Um, bringing, Dan, that's you next, then future agenda items.
Yes. So, uh, yes. So future agenda items will have obviously the continued item number three, which is the special exception at the meeting on June 1st. Um, and then looking into the future, we are looking at adult use marijuana social equity licenses. We're beginning that process. That'll come around. We're looking at doing an informational presentation on the housing and affordability strategy for Tucson. Um, we've talked a bit about doing some changes to bylaws that'll eventually come through. Um, and one other thing that we did want to just kind of at least bring up is that there are a lot of new members, especially over the last couple of years, people who have joined and we're looking to do a kind of a reorientation with the group and then do kind of a meet and greet. So you can get to kind of know each other and things of that sort in the near future. We'll obviously be posting that, uh, make sure that, uh, we don't have any quorum issues and things of that sort, but that, that'll be coming up in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, that brings us to item number six, call to the audience. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission this evening? Seeing no hands raised, then I will the next item, which is item number seven, adjournment. Can the chair will entertain a motion?
My second.
Good. Well.
For coming out and joining us. I appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Bless you all and thank you all. Sleep well.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Lexi. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks all. Appreciate it.
Good night.